Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Counselor Griswold?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
Thank you. And next up, we have the oath of office for the newly elected officials. If we'll have the officials that won election come up towards the front.
I guess the back.
Jason, this way.
You got another two here.
Where you want is probably pretty close. It's good or hello there.
In front of.
Center, front and center, Mayor.
Front and center.
The molly looking bunch.
Already on Twitter.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me and don't say my name. I do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States, the state of Oregon, and the city of Lebanon, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office for which I have been elected.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
We're in trouble now.
Official.
I know, scared.
Thank you, Trey, for not posting.
Okay, next up, approval of the council minutes. And our astute city clerk brought to my attention that we do have a policy for the city that we do need to have a motion for the minutes. So I thought that we didn't. We thought that we could go through Roberts' rules, but we need to follow the city charter, which says we do need to have a motion. So with that, were there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Call for motion?
Move for second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes from December 10th, regular session minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Minutes passed. And I did skip one thing. I apologize. Go back. We need to elect the council president. Is there any nominations for council president?
I nominate Bob Elliott.
Second to that.
It's been moved in second, or Bob Elliott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Don't look so excited, Bob.
Which unanimous.
Aye and amen.
You accept that, Bob?
Okay, we'll go again.
Bob will be our council president. And there has been a mention in the past of seating order for council members. And if there is a desire, I thought that I did not want to just do it. So I thought if anybody wanted to move, if we want to discuss it at this point, or if everybody's happy with their city. I know some people may not want to sit next to each other, but is there any particular seating order, anything anybody would like? Are we okay with what we got?
I don't know where we would put her.
Check your tires before you go on.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, we'll move on. And we'll go to the consent calendar. We have the agenda from the Lebanon City Council, agenda for tonight. We have the appointments, Budget Committee, Kim Olfer's reappointment, and the road dedication, right-of-way dedication for Central Willema Community Credit Union. Move for motion?
Move to move to roof.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar for tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Next up is public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. City clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Jason, did you want to come?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Greetings, Lebanon City Council. Oregon Summer Concerts in the city of Lebanon have an opportunity to again bring this community a world-class event. The first year of Guitars Under the Stars garnered national attention. We sold tickets to people as far away as Illinois, Texas, Washington, and California who traveled out to see this festival. Our goal for the city was to bring Lebanon a family-friendly event that would bring in additional commerce, and we achieved that. The families who attended our show told us repeatedly, both during and after our event, how much they enjoyed their weekend. Several stories have emerged telling tales of children inspired by the musicians they saw and asking for guitars and drum kits. First-year attendance, over 2,400, and that's great by any standard. We anticipate, based on previous events that we have hosted, that simply by repeating the event, we could expect up to a 72% increase in attendance this year. We intend to increase the level of nationally-known artists to increase interest and grow the event larger this year. We expect the economic impact on local merchants will grow as well. Guitars Under the Stars is more than just a concert. It's an interactive music experience designed to inspire and entertain. We will have more than 20 world-class artists perform on three stages. It will also host six guitar clinics throughout the weekend. The show puts an emphasis on rock, blues, fusion, and jazz guitar styles, separating it from the other events in Sweet Home and Brownsville. People who attended last year voiced how exciting it was to have an event like this in Lebanon. With the city of Lebanon's cooperation, we can ensure that this event becomes an annual destination for music lovers for years to come. As the festival grows each year, so will the economic impact on the community. We will, of course, continue to work to provide a family-friendly atmosphere that people in Lebanon can be proud of. We are asking for a monetary sponsorship of $15,000 to go towards the estimated $220,000 it would cost to bring this event back to the city of Lebanon. Last year's event was approximately $163,000. We would ask that the commitment be for a period of three years, at which time both the city of Lebanon and Oregon Summer Concerts could reevaluate the relationship. Additionally, our goals are to also, just like last year, we want to make a further impact on this community. We want to help the Boys and Girls Club. We want to help the local schools. We get this thing to where it's drawing the kind of attendance that the Jamboree and the By Mart Festival does. We can do just that. We can make an impact for our after-school programs, and we can make an impact for the program that they use to help feed underprivileged children over at the Boys and Girls Club. Being a guy who's from Lebanon, I went to Green Acres. I went to LMS before they tore it down. I went to Lebanon High School. This means something to me. So I don't know what questions you might have. I did speak to Shelley over at the chamber. There are some funding available through the, what was the Tourism Fund? Yeah, that's the word I was looking for. So she sent me over that application. They meet on the 29th. So there will be some portion of funding that can come from that. Basically, the idea is to bring the type of world-class event that you're seeing in the outlying communities and have Lebanon be a hub of activity from the week before the Jamboree all the way through the week after the By Mart Festival, with our own event being right in the middle. I want to fill that new hotel. I want to work with Ian Rollins over at Samaritan and put together hotel packages. So when people come to our event, we know that that hotel is full. We already know that that was one of the main reasons that they're putting that in is because of the bigger events that are growing in the area. We need something like this in our own community that belongs to us.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I did, I also heard great things about the event last year, so.
Thank you.
Good job. The Oregon Summer Concerts, that's a group, is it a for-profit group?
It is. You know, initially, when you start something like this, you have to have something behind it. We didn't have any, it's a first-year event, you know, so we put our own money into it. The truth of the matter is, we lost $42,000 bringing this event to Lebanon. We took one on the chin, and we're standing right here saying we want to do it again. We want this community to have something special. The first year of the By Mart Festival, they lost approximately $72,000.
Of By Mart's money, though.
No, no ma'am. No, that was private. That was private at first. That was put on by a group of gentlemen who, same type of vision that we have, and they lost their shorts.
And By Mart came on as a title sponsor.
Yes. We now have interest because we have finished and completed the event from sponsors, and that interest is going to grow each and every year. I'm heading down to California to the North American Music Manufacturers Convention next week, and I'm going to spend four days down there working directly with music manufacturers to sponsor the event. The goal is, one of the goals of the show is to inspire. We want kids to want to learn how to play musical instruments. Put down the iPad. Pick up a guitar. You know, that's the whole idea. And we've already got stories like that. I shared a video with you earlier. Krista Manetti, 12-years-old, freaking out over getting her first electric guitar after being inspired by 13-year-old Michael Hermes at the show. Another story was Shannon Schollenberger, 14-years-old, asking for a drum kit after being invited onstage by Peter, the drummer from Floater, and being allowed to sit in his seat and play the drums. Within three weeks, she owned a drum kit. So it's already happening. The goals that we set forth are already happening, and they can do nothing but improve and grow.
I got to say, I love, I love the idea of Lebanon having something like these other regional things. I mean, I'm in love with this coming to Lebanon. But we used to have a lot of groups coming to us all the time, looking for, looking for this kind of thing and seed money to get an event going and that would bring people to the city. And we finally gave the tourism dollars to the chamber and said, "Look, you guys come together with a more comprehensive plan and dole this money out." And there's not a lot of it. There's certainly not this level of it. Maybe when the hotel comes in, there will be more for them to be able to do that. But from my perspective, we don't have that. I don't know where we have that. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
From our pots of money, the appropriate pot of money is beyond our control, so.
The, a couple of things that have happened, you know, with the Jamboree and with the By Mart Festival is that, again, you start to see that influx. And I believe they're starting to build over there in Brownsville as well, a hotel. I mean, in Brownsville, a hotel? You know what I mean? So that's the kind of thing that, you know, the By Mart folks are now putting millions of dollars into that event. When you look at an event that'll start up now costs a couple hundred thousand dollars, we could potentially see that amount of money come back in commerce through the community over the next few years. A small contribution now could really help this event to take off so that we can attract those larger sponsors. The thing that happens is, the first year, everybody tells you, "Let's see what happens." And they have you do it on your own. When I came and met with you guys last year, I came to let you guys know, "We're going to do this." I didn't ask you for anything. And we put everything out. We put a year and a half of our time. We put our hearts and we put our money into this. So here we are back again, now that we have completed the event, asking, "How badly does this community want it?" And here's another possible angle, too. Is local business interested in seeing this come here? Can we get local business excited? And can we get a conglomerate to help us with some of this upfront funding?
Your time's up, Jason.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is there any discussion amongst council?
I think it's a great, I love the vision of it and where the potential could go. I'm with Rebecca. It's a, I'm very torn because I think, I am proud of what you're doing as a Lebanon kid, guy. I love it, and I want to support it 100% as much as we can. My biggest problem is that not eight months ago, you know, we had to lay off 10 employees.
Yes.
And so how does that look to not only our staff, but our community when we say, "Well, sorry, here's your pink slip," and then we turn around and we are able to find X number of dollars and, you know, it's a difficult position to be in, and it's not one that I'm comfortable making a call on.
That's actually something that we had thought about because we know that that happened. The reality is, unless you get some outside-of-the-box thinking going and you make some changes in the community that does bring in outside dollars, that trend will continue.
I think you'll find a lot of support, though, from the local business community. And there are people, there are people in this community that do have the money that could make that happen. I just don't think we're the, we're the agency for it. And I wish we could be, but I don't think we are.
You know, and Jason, I think, and I agree with Rebecca and Mr. Bowlin that, you know, we face some drastic cuts budget-wise, and we, as a council, I think, can impact your needs, maybe not this year, but in the future, by doing those things that bring the base from the tourism dollars that would come in through decisions we make to have housing for people that come to concerts, not only here, but Sweet Home and Brownsville. And that in turn will increase the percentage, perhaps, that the tourism dollars could go towards your event. But we're, I think we're, we're pretty strapped right now.
And Shelley, Shelley echoed that as well, from the Tourism Fund, that the figure that we were talking about was probably a little high. Again, you know, we're looking to bring back money into the community. If we can hit a certain, well, last year, our goal was 4,000 in attendance, and that would have allowed us to give $10,000 to the Boys and Girls Club and an additional eight to the high school. Those two figures alone are more than what we're asking for. So it's very possible for us to get to a point where we are giving back much more than what is being given in. And then on top of that, you have the additional dollars coming into the business communities. I, yeah, I do understand your position. It's a tough place to be. It's the same place we're in. We are getting pressure to possibly move the event closer to Portland, Population Center. I don't think that's the right move. I think these other events are as popular as they are because they've become a destination. People are going there. They're staying in those communities for several days at a time. They're camping. They're using the hotels. They're doing those things. I think moving it closer to a Population Center, that doesn't change anything. But we do need some support from this community if we're going to be able to do this year in and year out, especially in the second year, as we're really trying to get that attention to the business community that could help us with sponsorships and have a presence at the event. I mean, they got 35 acres out there. You know, when people are out at an event like that for multiple days, you have an engaged person who is seeing your message for an extended period of time. That's very powerful, so.
Robert, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I think that would be helpful for us, since we're discussing here how much potential revenue we have or don't have, is maybe Gary and Dean are probably going to do for us during the spring here, as we get closer to the end of the budget, an analysis of where we're at with our cash carry forward and our revenue picture. And at that particular point in time, I think it would be appropriate for the city manager to give us some recommendations as to what we do with that carry forward, if there is in fact a balance, to address special projects, or whether it's appropriate to carry that forward because of budget needs in the coming year. And I think, as we've heard here, there's interest, but we don't know yet where we can deliver that. So let's find out, as we get closer to the end of the year, what our opportunities are, and if there is any opportunities.
I can partially address that now. I don't have the specific numbers for you, but I can tell you, the challenge for this next budget is, I mean, you all know where we've been with the layoffs just before I came on board. And that was brought about because of some unexpected reductions in the revenue that we were bringing in. Since then, the good news is that we are improving and we're making strides, but you very soon will be looking at the budget policies that Dean and I have been working hard to get to you. And one of those policies is going to address the general fund cash balance and where that needs to be on a continuous basis. Industry standard can vary, but basically, we're coming to you at 20%, which is right in the middle of where most communities are. 20% of expenses should be set aside, annual expenses should be set aside as a threshold floor for your fund balance. Essentially, what that means is that if something goes wrong, you've got about two-and-a-half months' worth of cash to figure things out. We are not at 20% right now. I think we're 12, 13% right now. And the policies that we're going to ask you to adopt will prescribe that if you're not at that level, that you have to have a plan in place. Not that maybe you have to get there in one year, but you have to have a plan in place that over some reasonable number of years, you're going to get to that 20%. Okay, now, juxtapose that over the top of the fact that we lost 11 FTE in the cutbacks last February and March. That left some of our departments very thin. I'm concerned that we're thin enough now where, you know, we're all human, we make mistakes, things fall through the cracks. We are not performing at the level we need to perform at for a community of our population base. And so there are going to need to be some add-backs to this next budget. We're going to be able to do that, but it's going to have to be balanced with a whole, I'm sorry to get into this whole analysis right here, but it seems appropriate. We're going to have to balance that with a plan to address our fund balance in the general fund. So we're going to have to try to be making strides in both directions. That's a challenge. It's really difficult for me to look at you with a straight face and say, "We can spend in cash on other things." We have got to get our ship righted. I mean, we went through a storm. We took on some water. We got some cracks in the ship, but we're, seas are calm now. We're going to be able to make some repairs. And when we get there, we're going to be in a lot better financial shape. We're going to have the strength, the financial strength this community needs us to have going forward to do this kind of stuff. I'm sorry, but I don't think we're there. I don't think we're there right now. We're going to get there.
And if we had a beyond surplus, we were back to being staffed, then we could look at definitely supporting this kind of thing. I think, I don't know that anybody here could disagree that it helps the whole community, that it's a wonderful event and businesses, and we need this kind of excitement and enthusiasm in an event. But we have an existing pool of money that we dedicate to this, and that's, you know, that is what we have for now. It's limited funds, and hopefully that'll grow as we, as we grow and people come and it kind of feeds itself.
I want to say on the record that this kind of bites me in the rear end because I've come out of 15 years of managing resort tourist communities. I get this. I did this all the time in the tourist communities, and I know it brings in money. But there's a point where we've got to take care of.
Can only spare the dollar ones.
Our internal situation.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, we're not going to be good to anybody.
Right.
And so I'm just, my conservative side says, "You know what? We've got some issues that got to get addressed. Once that's taken care of, then we're going to be, we're going to have the strength we need." I have a quick question. Is there a way that we can, what I hear is, makes sense. Is there a way we can get the business community excited and understanding what's at stake for us as a community?
I think your best vehicle for that is through the chamber, is again, back through She's, she's your biggest.
And can we get the city's endorsement, at least? That we feel, you know, as a group, that this is appropriate for this community.
Quite appropriate for that, yeah.
And I think there's another opportunity just around the corner here, which we could also endorse, and that's with the visioning process. To talk about this as something that we would like to plant as a flag for this community, that we see this as part of a long-term vision and strategy for this community, certainly is appropriate to go on record also.
Back, Jason, I'd suggest to you, one of the things you might want to do is, we're launching the, you know, for the most part, we're launching our vision project this month, and we're going to be talking to people all over the community about their hopes, dreams, fears for the community. I think it's a great time for you to be kind of planting the seed with people, your vision. Your vision does inspire people. I think the more that you can get that message out, so they're, they're giving that back in the whole vision process, the more chance there is that that can take a focal point in the vision document that we, we develop, the whole tourism element and. Is there someone on the council that I can work with to get information to, to help? You'd work with me. Okay. I'd be happy to. Perfect. Be thrilled to. I like what you're doing. I'd like to see it be successful. I truly would. I'm an old metalhead anyway, so I love the stuff, so I'd like to see this go. I'm glad you're not doing country.
Can we have a consensus of a follow-through letter to the chamber from, from the city of the, oh, yeah, here's a question.
Yeah, they meet on the 29th, is what Shelley told me, so, and she said it would get routed back to you if there was a pre-approval. She said there may be $500 that would be available, is what she was envisioning. That would help with some advertising costs. I mean, when you're looking at a $220,000 bucket, it's kind of like throwing a pencil in a mannequin's jar or something, you know, it just kind of disappears. But, you know, it would help.
And as, as when you and Gary and I met that one time, we were talking a while back, I think also that the city could possibly do some in-kind things, you know, it might be some of our street departments that they helped out of the Parks Department. So we might be able to do some things like that.
And we did get some support in that way last year. You know, logistically, it was amazing, the things that people came forward with, you know. But yeah, the idea is that, how can we find the dollars to make sure that we make the noise? I mean, you need to have total saturation and advertising for an event like this. Last year, we did digital billboards. We did the standing billboards, radio, TV, Facebook, handed out over 30,000 of those small handbills at events. We sent teams to, at the state fair, all the county fairs, upcoming concerts, and we handed out over 30,000 of those things. 3,000 posters and flyers. You guys saw them all up and down Main Street for our event, and we took them all back down. But we did a ton of advertising. It takes total, people need to see three types of ads. You need to hear it on the radio, see it on TV. You see the Facebook thing and you go, "Oh, that's a big deal. I better check that out." Or you see a poster, or you hear about it on the radio, and then you see Facebook. By that third contact, people get the impression that it's something real. But all that takes dollars, real dollars. And that's where we need the community in some way to step forward.
Robert?
Yes, I move that we endorse this project and provide a letter of support.
I don't think we need to really move, have a motion on that. I think we could probably do that with just a consensus. Is the.
You could do it either way. Yeah, let's do it.
Is the council okay with writing a letter? We'll support the organization and.
Absolutely.
And what it can do for our community? Bob?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And Gary, I'll get with you on the vision.
Okay. And I'll work with you on the letter.
Let's get together soon, because it's all happening. It's all, next week, we've got stakeholder interviews. I'd like to make sure you're, you have one of those slots. Okay. And if you have other people you'd like to have involved in that, this is the time.
And maybe if we could talk about, you can go over the in-kind supports that might be available. Maybe that would help him leverage some other things if some of the other business sponsors in the area knew what the city was providing in that kind of.
In fact, you know what we can do? Let's get together, we'll organize a meeting with some of the key department heads who might factor in in-kind stuff we can do. Okay. And let's talk it out and make sure we've got all the bases covered. Touch base in the morning and compare schedules and figure that out, then? Does that work for you? Yeah. Do you have my email? I think I have it, possibly, but let me get it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number one, 2014-15 supplemental budget amendment, presented by Frank Stevenson, Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. What you guys have before you is fiscal year 15 supplemental budget amendment. For the 14-15 year, the city provided a part-time school resource officer, or commonly referred to as SRO, paid for by a contribution from the school district. After the adopted, or the adoption of the 14-15 budget, the school district and the city have been discussing and discussed increasing the position to a full-time SRO position. And this is primarily due to the fact the contracted employee who's currently doing the SRO is fully retiring after several years, so. But the agreement has been reached to increase the position to a full-time for the remainder year of the 14-15 school year. The attached supplemental budget amendment resolution proposes changes to the 14-15 the 14-15 budget under Fund, under the SRO Fund 564, which increases the contribution from the Lebanon School District as well as increases personal budget, personnel budget.
I'll add to that, that the SRO right now, the part-time fellow that's doing it covers Seven Oak School and the high school. The new position will cover the entire system in the city of Lebanon. So all the schools will have this coverage and exposure to law enforcement, so I think it's real positive.
Can the city attorney read the resolution?
It was already... Testing, there we go. Resolution number 2015-1, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget amendment to the city of Lebanon 2014-14 budget, 15 budget.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2015, number one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Number two, SRO...
Just a follow-up question. So how much, in a full-time mode, how much time will we spend in the other schools outside the high school and outside the middle school?
You know, we're still coming up with, because it's something new, it's a new concept. I'm going to wait for the train to move on by before... Because as soon as I open up my mouth, it's going to... All right, I think the train's gone by. So we've been working with the school district in relation to that question alone. Primary function's going to be the high school and middle school. And the SRO is going to act as a point of contact for the other schools. So he will be spending some time when time is there, but he'll be the, that point of contact for the other school districts within the school, or the other schools within the district. So, you know, he's one guy, a lot of schools to cover, so we're going to kind of reevaluate after a period of time to see what's working, if the point of contact is in fact something that's useful and so forth, so.
The district is the one that kind of schedules his time in terms of location.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it basically, he'll be having communications with the school district itself to see where in fact he's going to be visiting and so forth. But my ideas are that he visits these schools as much as possible and gets in the schools and, you know, benefits not only the school district but also the police department as well when it comes to emergency services. So, kind of be that liaison person.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
Move for approval. Second?
Didn't we already...
What are we approving?
What's that?
What are we approving?
The contract, I'm sorry, for the contract, the SRO.
Okay, I didn't know we had moved on to that.
Contract amendment.
Are we on number two?
Number two?
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah, we passed the budget amendment, we're doing number two.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time hearing, so it was my call, so. You need, you don't need to read it or anything.
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the SRO contracts amendment of the current SRO contract and approve the new five-year contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We did pass the budget, sorry, we did pass the budget amendment. I wasn't sure that we had opened the discussion on the second one.
Wait, well, Bob's comments kind of, his follow-up comments kind of led us there but wasn't really officially announced.
Okay.
So I think we eventually kind of discussed item number two and then voted on it.
Okay. No, we did approve the first one.
Yeah, we...
Everybody's... It's only my, it's only my third year, I know, I'm learning. Number three, limited liability use of trailer structures and public easements right-of-way, presented by Trey Kennedy.
This is a pretty basic one. Working on some recent easements and different things with the trail group, and some issues came up about a landowner who was going to give us an easement, and I decided to take a look at the liability issues. Low and behold, we have a stat, state statutes that allows the cities, it's automatic if you're bigger than 500,000 in Portland, but you have to adopt it by resolution if you're less than 500,000. And so this allows the city to limit its liability for any, any injuries, you know, non-intentional injuries, accidents that occur on the trails or structures associated with trails sponsored by the city. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No brainer.
No questions, seeing that? Would you like to read it?
Resolution number 2015-2, a resolution of the Lebanon City Council adopting the limitation of liability for trail use contained in ORS 105.668.
Move for approval. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the limiting liability use of trail structure and public easements right-of-way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Number four, city manager's report.
Okay, well, you all have my report in the packet. I'm going to focus on one thing tonight because I think it's the most important. I'm going to pass out to you some of the materials that have just accompanied the launching of our vision project. I'll let this get passed around and I'll go through it with you. A very large email blast went out from me this afternoon to people all over the community announcing our first phase of stakeholder interviews and avenues of participation in the vision. This first green flyer with the photos on it lists next week on the 21st, the vision project will be at the Boys and Girls Club, will also be at Riverview Elementary that evening, and then the following day on the 22nd, will be at the Chamber of Commerce office. The purpose of these meetings is to begin to take input from folks, to distribute the survey questions that are going to be part of gathering the data that we want to put together. So you've got this flyer here, and then the next item is a two-sided, it's not really a postcard, I'll call it a postcard, but it has the, the basic survey questions on the opposite side of that. And then the next item in this packet, it doesn't really show very well, it shows much better online, is the actual printout of the website. The website was launched on Monday for the vision project, and I'll encourage all of you to go to that, that website. It's lebanon2040.org. Please go to that and look around. When you get to it, you're going to see a series of four photographs. Make sure you scroll down. We, we realized we needed something that told people to scroll down, and so that's in the works now. But there's a lot of good information on there about the vision and what we're doing going forward. There's a schedule of events, there's the online survey that you can take if you don't want to do a long-hand survey, you can go online and type your questions in on your computer screen. So I'm just really excited that we've got this thing going. I've been, I've been kind of carrying the message to all of the community groups that I visit on a regular basis over the last couple of weeks. This is where it all starts, folks. From here going until the council meeting in June, there's going to be a lot of activity. We're going to be doing the survey, stakeholder interviews. This first series of stakeholder interviews will result in subsequent interviews of other folks. One of the key things the consultants will be asking people that they interview this time is give us a list of other people that you would like us to contact. So it's going to kind of grow like a Christmas tree out, so we can reach out farther and farther. And by the way, that's why we're going to, like, the Boys and Girls Club. We're intentionally trying to find those areas where we can grow that Christmas tree out into areas of the community that aren't normally reached in this kind of a project. We have put, and the steering committee, and I know the city council's on board with this too, we have put a lot of emphasis on the fact that while we want to hear from the people who are always involved, certainly, but we also want to have a true reading of the community. And that means we need to reach folks that aren't normally involved for whatever reason. I mean, some of them are, you know, life, life is a challenge and just getting the kids to school and going to work and all that, especially for some of our single parents is really tough. But it's not right for us to lose them in this process. So our consultants have been tasked with that outreach. There is, one of the three consultants working is specifically tasked for that role, for that extra outreach. So I'm excited about this in my career. I have not had the opportunity to do this sort of a project to this extent, so, and I've said it before, the purpose of this, and I want to, I want to review that, the purpose of this is to be able to, once this is done, put some strategic plans together that's based on where our community truly wants us to go. Once we have that, we've got some really powerful information that will help us redesign where we put our financial resources and how we assign our human resources. We will, out of this process, end up with an overarching vision statement, but it will be supported by a foundation of six to 12, six to 10 focus areas. And those focus areas will be those things that we need to work on that together will help us get to that big vision up above. This is not something, and I won't tolerate this, this is not something we do, we put on shelf. We've seen government do that a lot. That's not what this is about. This is about identifying those focus areas, and in July, August, after hopefully you've all adopted the vision in June, I'm going to be back here talking about next step is our strategic planning. And there's going to be a good number of those six to 10 focus areas that are going to be ours. I say a good number because there may be a few in there that belong to some community groups, maybe the chamber, maybe, who knows, maybe the schools, I don't know. But this is truly a community vision, it's not simply a vision for our organization, being our organization, the city. So it's very important that we have the broadest possible participation, and that's why I keep, I'm sorry, I'm harping on this. It's important, this is the time to get engaged. We want to hear from you. You know, in my career in government, I've heard people plenty of times come to council meetings and say, "You're not listening to us," or, you know, "You're not, you're off track, you don't, you're out of touch," whatever. You know what? We're trying very hard. We, we're asking for you to come and talk to us. That's what this vision process is about. I'm inspired by it, I hope that others will get inspired by it and that this can be a raging success for us. I know that when I go to my city manager meetings, the local council of governments, we have a lunch every month, all the other managers keep on asking me, "What's going on with the vision?" We're being watched. We're, we're putting a flag in the ground, and we're doing something a little bit different than others normally do. So I want to make us proud, I want to make Lebanon stand out in the state of Oregon and take a lead as far as strategic planning and good government for a city. And I think we're poised to do that. So again, go to the website, get involved. You, when this is all done, I don't want to hear anyone say, you know, "I didn't have a chance." This, this is here, it's here. And if you still don't know how to get involved, come talk to me personally, I will help you out. So if there are any questions?
Are we getting any local talk radio on this? What are the other marketing strategies?
We haven't been talking radio yet, but I anticipate we will, absolutely. I'll be all over that, yeah. In fact, I'll be talking to Weldon Gregg tomorrow, I'll be, I'll be asking him about that. So. Any questions about that? Okay, for the next four or five months, it's going to be all about the vision.
I'd just like to say I'm really pleased with your enthusiasm over this. I know you're really into it. And I think we're going to be very successful when we get through with this.
I was going to say, I'm not clear how you feel about this, Gary. Yeah, meh.
You know, as a government wonk my whole career, there are very few organizations that take the opportunity to do this. They get so enmeshed in just doing what they did last year and trying to keep the wolf away from the door without really asking themselves, "What's the ultimate mission?" And there is nothing better for government or a community than to do this together.
Yeah, I for one was not looking forward to another goal-setting session for the council, not having any kind of a long-term plan. It was just difficult sitting here trying to come up with ideas and things that we wanted to plan when we didn't have a big plan. And that's the whole strategic part of it, is once we find out what the community wants, then we can move forward with a plan and say, "These are the things we want." Because when we're looking at spending money, some organization comes to us and wants to spend money, you know, is that a priority for us? Well, if we've got the plan, then we know what priorities are and what they're not. So I'm excited.
I represent Lebanon in the, what do you call it? Now I lost my train of thought.
Council of Government?
Council of Government over in Albany. And at the end of the program, they come around every individual and say, "What's happening in your city?" And whenever it comes to me, everybody's right up on their seat waiting to hear what's happening in Lebanon. And boy, I enjoy telling them. Look forward to it.
Anything else, Gary?
I'm done.
Okay. Any items from the council? I have one thing I'd like to bring up. I want to thank the city manager, Gary, Chief of Police Frank, Deila from the police department, and all the volunteers for the warming shelter that got activated.
Yeah.
It was activated quickly. The first night, we didn't really have anybody, and the second night, we actually had several people. And I, I don't know, I think I heard someone was from the hospital that went over there too that needed some help, came directly from the hospital. So we just really appreciate that, that our community came together, that that happened so well and so quickly. I appreciate your work.
Thanks. Definitely was a team, team effort.
Very good. With that, any other comments from the public? Would anybody like to speak?
I was late, but I wasn't going to say nothing, I was going to open my mouth. This is my own opinion. But I'm sick and tired since it happened. And he covered his bones before he got out of here, as Mr. Hitt. Calm the council and the paying for his attorney once he retired, and cooking the books and they coming up with, there was a misjudgment in monies coming in. They didn't have monies to pay for their bill that they owed Lowe's, they didn't have monies to pay for the college that they bought this building out here for. Why can't you just come out? I know it's politics, because I worked in it for better than 20 years, my last time I put my time in, because they said I'd never worked. But this sugar coating is getting to me. I'd just like for, you know, be able for you people to say, "Hey, he cooked the books, he screwed us, and we got to move forward instead of coating it all the time." That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
That'd be Glenn Ufford. And I've probably saved most of what I have for your visioning program, which I think is a, it's a good thing. I do fear that there'll be a lot of people that really have an idea that, you know, they just pay their, pay their taxes and they, or pay their rent, it goes into taxes, and really don't feel like they've got any input to City Hall, and they won't say their piece. And I think a lot of those people are not eager to see Lebanon growing leaps and bounds to become like Albany, or to become a new industrial town, you know. Slow, and as businesses want to come in, that's fine, but they, they come and ask you to, to spend our money, put us in debt, to spend our money at risk, to invest in these things like Lowe's. And I don't know how all the other money is spent, because I haven't paid that close attention to it yet. But as I get it, the state of Oregon thought it was a good idea to help clean up the inside of the cities where there's a blight. And so they authorized these urban renewal programs whereby that the city council can put us in debt without having a public vote on it. And I may be wrong on that, but it looks to me like there's no public vote. If you want to build a city hall, or a library, or something other, you have to put that bond issue to a vote to go into bonded indebtedness. But if you want to put in something like bribe Lowe's to come in and put in a store that kind of clean up the blight that was out there north of town... that kind of clean up the blight that was out there north of town, you know, you don't have to get a vote of the public to put them at risk. If I'm wrong, you know, correct me on that. So, anyway, now they have the... I went to the meeting where they're going to... talking about what to do with this Lamont land. And, you know, there probably is some reason to make some improvements there, but... and you changed the land use to where it was no longer strictly industrial. And I didn't realize at the time that that was going to be a full-fledged residential development. And now I understand from them, I think maybe he let it slip, whatever. He's going to ask you to come and help move all that ground to make it into a residential area. And it's going to take quite a bit of money, and I think that's what they want to come to you to help have us go into more debt to do that. So I would hope that you be real conscious of whether that's a good thing to do. And you have limited access in and out, and, you know, there's a bunch of problems. But, you know, you got to make some good use for it. I understand that. But you don't really have to help the guy out if that's something they want to do, make it a long-term project, not a short-term. You've got plenty of houses here anyway. So it seems to me, building lots more apartment buildings with the idea... somebody got the idea that we're in a real growth mode and trying to make this a big city. And, anyway, that's my two bits for now, and I'll be back.
I'd like to give you a little feedback on some of what you had to say.
Sure.
And I'll certainly agree with you that there is a history of urban renewal in other places going awry and problems coming out of it. In Oregon, one of the things about urban renewal is that when you... what happened before I arrived here to address the Lowe's urban renewal issue and the automotive school and so forth, was that bonds were sold. Now, if those bonds had been bonds that required the full faith and credit of the city of Lebanon and Lebanon taxpayers, which means that if something defaulted, the city could go back to the taxpayers and say, "You got to pony up," then, yeah, there would have to be a vote. There would have to be a vote on that. However, an urban renewal bond is more of what we call a revenue bond, which means that if something goes wrong and payments can't be made to the bondholders, there's no authority for the city... in fact, the urban renewal is actually a separate district, but there's no authority for the city to go to the taxpayers. What happens typically is the bondholders are out, the people who put up their money in the first place. So I want to be careful about... because I think urban renewal may have an important role for us to play going forward, done responsibly, as I've just described to you, where we protect our city taxpayers. I think it's wrong. I agree with you that it's wrong for us to jeopardize our established community for growth going forward. But I don't think we have to. I don't think we have to do that.
I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah. And so when I hear concerns like yours, I want to make sure that I'm able to respond to that and hopefully the community have a better understanding about what this all means.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that doesn't mean there haven't been some bad urban renewal examples. I mean, you can find them all over the country. Things like, you know, probably not the best use of condemnation, you're going in and taking people's property. That's not what I'm about. I don't think that's what this city wants to be about. But the responsible use of urban renewal can be a very powerful tool to provide jobs for people in Lebanon. And whatever growth does come to us, I hope one of the things that comes out of this vision is that that growth is molded and shaped in a way that this community will be proud of, that will enhance us rather than subtract from us. Growth can do one or the other. And so that's part of why we're doing this vision, because we want to make sure that the future just doesn't happen to us. You know, just don't hand me some future because events just happen to us. I think we need to be in the driver's seat as a community and say, "This is the community we want to be in 25 years. To get there, we've got to do X, Y, and Z." Urban renewal might be a part of that. It won't be all of it. But it might be a part of what we need to do. And if we do do it, sir, I want to assure you that we'll be doing it in a responsible way, where we don't jeopardize the taxpayers, the city of Lebanon.
Well, I think there's... we have two things. One is, I agree that responsible, and I think you're trying to do that. And I know I've voted kind of over my time, so you can just tell me to leave here. So, but the... where was I headed? I think people, you know, jobs is a good thing, but I fear that you give the appearance of having jobs coming in, and you've got more people coming in, more building going on to accommodate more people to come in, and there'll be fewer jobs available per person. Okay?
No, it's a tricky thing. I'll grant you that.
I've got more ideas. I'll talk, you know, to the...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But anyway, I appreciate your time at this time.
Thanks.
I'll come back and yammer on some more sometime. Thank you.
Right.
Anyone else from the community? Items from the press? Any questions?
Will there be a Facebook page through the city across?
No, we'll be using this...
Yeah. We didn't want to create a new Facebook page and have to friend all these people brand-new. We've got an established Facebook page through the city that has lots of our community folks attached to it. Or, I don't know if you call it friends when it's an organization, but are attached to our Facebook page. So we're using that existing population, and we're feeding all of the vision information onto the city's Facebook.
There is a separate webpage, though.
Quite quickly.
Anything else?
And, in fact, if you go on the city... if you forget the address of the vision website, if you go on the city website, on the upper right-hand side is a button for the...
Left?
He's doing it.
Yeah, it's the left-hand. I'm sorry. If you push that button, it'll take you right to the website.
Was he opening on the city for the budget committee? Was that advertised? I know she appointed somebody.
That was the fire district.
Fire district.
Oh, that's fire district.
Okay. Okay, seeing nothing else from the press?
District.
We will adjourn the meeting.